I'd like to welcome you to this public hearing of the New York City Rent Guidelines Board. This is the first of four public hearings to consider comments concerning proposed rent adjustments for renewal leases or for apartments, lofts, hotels, and other housing units subject to the Rent Stabilization Law of 1969 and the Emergency Tenant Protection Act of 1974. These adjustments will affect renewal leases commencing between October 1, 2019 through September 30, 2020. I will now take roll call. Please respond if present. Shayla Garcia.
Present.
Leah Goodridge.
Present.
Cecilia Hossa.
Present.
Alex Schwartz.
Present.
Patty Stone.
Present.
Armand Dejeda.
Present.
Scott Walsh.
May Yu.
Present.
David Reese.
Present.
Let the record show that we have a quorum. The next meeting of this board will be a public hearing on June 13. In all, there will be three more public hearings to comment on the proposed guidelines. They will be held on the following dates, times, and locations. Thursday, this coming Thursday, June 13, 2019, at St. Francis College in downtown in Brooklyn Heights, 180 Remsen Street, from 5:00 to 8:00. There will be interpretation available in Spanish, Mandarin, and Cantonese, and this location is wheelchair accessible. Tuesday, June 18, that's a week from today, Jamaica Performing Arts Center Auditorium, 153-10 Jamaica Avenue in Jamaica, Queens, from 5:30 to 8:30. Interpretation will be available in Spanish. This location is wheelchair accessible. Thursday, June 20, that's a week from Thursday, Oberia D. Dempsey Multi-Service Center Auditorium at 127 West 127th Street, from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m., and there will be interpretation available in Spanish. This location is also wheelchair accessible. Directions to these hearings are posted on our website, nyc.gov/rgb. Pre-registration to speak at these hearings has begun. You can sign up by calling the Rent Guidelines Board offices at (212) 669-7480, then press zero to register. For further information, see our website, and as always, there are copies of our meeting schedule here tonight. The final vote will take place on June 25, starting at 7:00 p.m. It will be held in the Great Hall at Cooper Union, 7 East 7th Street in Manhattan. If you are interested in receiving email updates about upcoming RGB meetings and hearings, please take one of our flyers that are here today, or you can sign up by going to the board's new homepage at nyc.gov/rgb. Feel free to ask members of the staff at the registration desk to help you to sign up for these email updates. I'd like to thank you all for attending this public hearing. The board is looking forward to hearing from many of you regarding the proposed rent adjustment guidelines. Based upon the testimony we have heard in previous years, we know that many of you are here with concerns about housing conditions and various aspects of rent regulation that may be beyond the mandate of this board. In order to help address those concerns, representatives from New York State Homes and Community Renewal are available to answer questions and provide advice. They're located up in the lobby. The board very much appreciates their willingness to participate in these hearings. Before we proceed with the testimony, I'd like to go over the rules and procedures for those who are testifying before the board. If you wish to speak, you must first confirm your presence with the RGB staff at the registration table located near the entrance of the hall. Speakers will not be called if they have not checked in at the registration table. There is a Spanish interpreter here today. When registering to speak, please notify the staff if you would like an interpreter. I will try to call several names in advance. When your name is called, please come to the front of the auditorium. If you have materials to distribute to the board, you should give them to the RGB staff sitting at the sign-in table near the entrance. I will attempt to alternate speakers between tenants and owners, but this may not always be possible. In order to accommodate as many speakers as possible, each speaker will have two minutes to give their testimony. An additional two minutes of speaking time will be given to those speakers utilizing interpretation services. To help speakers keep track of their time, we have a clock right in the front, and we will start the clock when you begin speaking. The clock will beep once when you have 30 seconds left and will continue beeping when the allotted two minutes are up. If you are speaking at the end of two minutes, I will ask you to quickly wrap up your testimony. We expect many speakers, and the board wants to hear from as many speakers as possible in the limited time that we have for this hearing. We understand that it may be difficult to say everything you want us to hear in just two minutes, but please understand that it is our responsibility to make sure that everyone who has taken the time to come here and testify will have a fair opportunity to be heard. We hope that -- we're excited that you're here to speak, and we hope that you can speak and then get home to your families and prepare for your workday tomorrow, and so we thank you for your cooperation. And now the interpreter will read those remarks in Spanish. Yeah, is Maria -- I thought I saw her walking down. Okay, please, thank you. So, as you can see, there's a mic to my left, to your right, depending on where you're sitting. Let me tell you the speakers we have lined up. My first speaker is Mr. X. My second speaker is Dele Azell. My third speaker is Eric Bornstein. My fourth speaker is Kareem Arab, representing Assemblymember Latoya Joyner. But if you want to start heading down, if you -- just so you're closer to the mic, feel free, but before people actually speak, we'll have the Spanish interpretation for my introductory remarks.
Buenas tardes. Bienvenida. Me gustaría darles la bienvenida a esta audiencia pública del comité para regulaciones de renta de la ciudad de Nueva York. Esta es la primera de las cuatro audiencias públicas para considerar los comentarios sobre los ajustes de alquiler propuestos para los arrendamientos de renovación de apartamentos, lofts, hoteles, y otras unidades de vivienda sujeto a la ley de estabilización de alquiler de 1969 y la ley de protección de inquilinos de emergencia de 1974. Estos ajustes afectarán a los arrendamientos de renovación, arrendamientos que comienzan entre el 1 de octubre de 2019 y el 30 de septiembre de 2020. La próxima reunión de esta junta será una audiencia pública el 13 de junio. En total, habrán tres audiencias públicas más para comentar las directrices propuestas. Se llevarán a cabo en las siguientes fechas, horarios, y lugares. La próxima será el jueves 13 de junio de 2019, en St. Francis College, 180 de Remsen Street in Brooklyn. De 5 a 8, habrá interpretación disponible en español, mandarín, y cantonés. Y también el martes, junio 18, 2019, en Jamaica Performing Arts Center, en el auditorio, en la 153 10 de Jamaica Avenue, de 5:30 de la tarde a 8:30 de la noche, con interpretación disponible en español. Y el jueves, junio 20, del 2019, una audiencia pública en la Oberia D. Dempsey Multi-Service Center, en el auditorio, en la 127 West 127th Street, a las 5:00 de la tarde hasta las 8:00 de la noche, con interpretación disponible en español. Las direcciones a estas audiencias se pueden encontrar en nuestro sitio web, nyc.gov/rgb. La pre-inscripción para hablar en estas audiencias ha comenzado. Pueden inscribirse llamando a las oficinas del Rent Guidelines Board al (212) 669-7480, luego presionando el cero para registrarse. Para más información, consulte nuestro sitio web, y como siempre, hay copias de nuestro horario de reunión aquí esta noche. La votación final se llevará a cabo el 25 de junio a partir de las 7:00 de la noche. Se llevará a cabo en el Gran Salón de Cooper Union, a las 7 de la Séptima Calle y 7th Street en Manhattan. Me gustaría agradecerles a todos por asistir a esta audiencia pública. La junta espera con interés recibir noticias de muchos de ustedes sobre las pautas de ajustes de renta propuestas. Con base en el testimonio que hemos escuchado en años anteriores, sabemos que muchos de ustedes aquí tienen inquietudes sobre las condiciones de vivienda y diversos aspectos de la regulación de alquileres que pueden estar más allá del mandato de esta junta. Para ayudar a abordar estas inquietudes, los representantes de New York State Homes and Community Renewal están disponibles para responder preguntas y brindar asesoramiento. Están ubicados en el vestíbulo. La junta aprecia mucho su voluntad de participar en esta audiencia. Antes de proceder con el testimonio, me gustaría repasar las reglas y procedimientos para los que están testificando ante la junta. Si desea hablar, debe confirmar su presencia con el personal de RGB en la mesa de registro ubicada cerca de la entrada de la sala. No se llamará a los oradores si no se han registrado en la mesa de registro. Hay un intérprete de español aquí hoy. Cuando se registre para hablar, notifica al personal si desea un intérprete. Intentaré llamar a varios nombres por haber adelantado. Cuando su nombre se ha llamado, por favor, venga al frente del auditorio. Si tiene materiales para distribuir a la junta, debe entregarlos al personal de RGB que se encuentra en la mesa de registro cerca de la entrada. Intentaré alternar oradores entre inquilinos y propietarios, pero esto no siempre es posible. Con el fin de dar cabida a tantos oradores como sea posible, cada orador tendrá dos minutos para dar su testimonio. Se darán dos minutos adicionales de tiempo para hablar a los oradores que utilizan los servicios de interpretación. Para ayudar a los oradores a hacer un seguimiento de su tiempo, tenemos un reloj. Comenzaremos el reloj cuando empieces a hablar. El reloj emitirá un pitido una vez cuando el altavoz disponga de 30 segundos. Continuará sonando cuando hayan transcurrido los dos minutos asignados. Si todavía está hablando a cabo de dos minutos, le pediré que concluya rápidamente su testimonio. Esperamos que haya muchos oradores y que la junta quiera -- y la junta desea escuchar a tantos oradores como sea posible en el tiempo limitado que tenemos para esta audiencia. Entendemos que puede ser difícil decir todo lo que quiere que escuchemos en solo dos minutos, pero comprenda que es nuestra responsabilidad asegurarnos de que todos los que se tomaron el tiempo para venir aquí y testificar tengan una oportunidad justa de ser escuchados. Les damos gracias por su cooperación.
Thank you. Our first speaker is Mr. X, and on deck is Dele Azell.
Let me tell you something, Chair. You need to start these public hearings at or after 6:00 p.m. Can't start them at 5:00 p.m. It's a bad idea. People are still working. That's why you see all these empty seats here, similar to the MTA, which stands for Money Thrown Away. Okay? Also, in this borough, eat the whole amount like 851 Grand Congress Avenue, not here at Hose's College. That building is more wheelchair accessible. The subway train stations, nearby subway train stations are wheelchair accessible. The nearby railroad station, railroad train station is wheelchair accessible. This is a bad place to hold public hearings, Bronx Island, A.K. Bronx Y, just in case you didn't know. Okay? You need to get these tenants a rollback, rent rollback, not a rent freeze, rent rollback. They should have gotten it years ago. Year after year, they constantly complain about their slum lords, which was what I have, a slum lord, only cares by herself, just like Alicia Servison with a big nose, but that's another story. I'm involved in a whole proceeding case with her because she wants everything done her way. And you shouldn't focus on how much money we should pay the landlords and the slum lords. What you should do is crack down these slum lords who don't give a damn about their tenants. That's what you need to do. You don't need to decide how much money we should pay. That should be up to the building owners, landlords, slum lords, et cetera, because that's who we pay rent to. We don't pay rent to you. That's what you need to do starting next year. Focus on these slum lords who don't give a damn about their tenants. Okay? And as I said before, you hold public hearings, you need to start them at or after 6:00 p.m. You need to hold public hearings in Staten Island, okay? And then, like I said, in this borough, hold them at 851 Grand Congress Avenue. It's more wheelchair accessible, okay? There's no excuse for this. You see this here? You're inside Hose's College. People fought to save this college in 1976.
Thank you for your testimony.
This is leftovers, just like the MTA, money thrown away.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Dele Azell. Good evening.
My name is Dee Lee Azell.
Sorry for that.
And I'm a proud Bronxite. I chose to live here, and I chose to work here for more than 50 years. I dedicated myself to building and rebuilding, building and rebuilding my borough and my city. I'm tired now. I'm sick now, but the fight has not changed. So here I am again before this board pleading for a just consideration of housing conditions in our city. We have an emergency, people. The housing status has too many New Yorkers in a crisis. We need you to see the need for balance between incomes and rents. No increase in income, no increase in rents. Try to understand what these increases mean in the lives of New Yorkers. Landlords must stop the tricks and learn to do what we do. Buy less food, less medication, no vacations, no support for children's education. There's no law that says they must increase their profits at the cost of our lives, and that's what's happening here. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Azell. Our next speaker is Eric Bornstein, and followed by Kareem Arab.
Eric Bornstein.
And then I announce the name of the next speaker.
Okay. I'm Eric Bornstein.
Could I ask that you use the microphone, please?
I'm Esther.
Are we recording or are we -- Yeah, we are. We are recording it. Can somebody bring it to you?
That is the question, whether this donor in the line to summon his things and arrows of outrageous force, or to take arms against him to see him from the left, or to end him. No rent increase, no rent, no landlords. Tenants take over your apartment. You have the money and the knowledge. The slum lords only have the hope that their exploitation of you will continue. Tenants unite! Strike! 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 Letting live.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Kareem Arab, and followed by Edwin Figueroa.
Good evening, Chairperson David Reese and members of the New York City Rent Guidelines Board. I'm here on behalf of Assemblywoman Latoya Joyner and the residents of the more than 33,000 apartments under rent regulation in the 77th Assembly District. With nearly three-quarters of her constituents living in rent-regulated apartments, Assemblywoman Joyner is deeply concerned about the impact that the decisions of the board will have upon the daily lives of the families she represents, particularly since the latest available data shows that the median household income is $26,436, one of the lowest median household incomes of any legislative district in New York City. The board's preliminary decision to approve a 1-point percent hike in rents for one-year leases and 2.5 percent increase in two-year leases is a mistake that would only serve to further squeeze the finances of family budgets that are already being pushed to the limit. It essentially ignores the reality that, under the current system, far too many families in Assemblywoman Joyner's district and throughout the city are faced with major capital improvements, MCIs, and individual apartment improvements, IAIs, that raise the cost of housing even further than the maximum allowable rent. That is why Assemblywoman Joyner is supportive of the resolution supported by two members of this board last month that would begin the process of rolling back rents to more affordable levels. That proposal would have rolled back rents by up to 0.5 percent for one-year leases and only 1 percent for two-year leases. On behalf of the communities of Claremont, Concord's, Hybridge, Mount Eden, and Morris Heights in the Bronx, Assemblywoman Joyner strongly urges the Rent Guidelines Board to support the rent rollback proposal that tenant advocates and members of this board have so strongly supported. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Edwin Figueroa, followed by Marian Babawala.
No, I speak Spanish, English, and bullshit. I do just fine. Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Edwin Figueroa, and I'm a welcome to the Bronx.
Thank you.
I don't have a prepared statement, but obviously you don't need to prepare a statement to realize what's going on in this borough, as the city for their nature. The MCIs in some buildings have been used to abuse the tenants. The IAIs, obviously, are in the same track, especially in these communities. We are a rent burden and a food burden community. I'm not talking about the whole borough, but obviously this part of the borough and there are parts of East Harlem that I've been to and represented, parts of Brooklyn, mostly working-class communities. They are burdened. In some cases, landlords have used the funding, or rather, the incentive to bring in higher-paying tenants into these buildings. These are communities that no one really gave a damn about years ago, but right now, we don't have a manufacturing base, we don't have the economy to keep up with the cost of living, where these tenants are year after year, some are living month by month, deciding on whether to eat healthy food or to pay the rent. That's not a burden that any human being should have to live with. So if there is a capability to zero a rent increase, and I advise you guys to do it, it's a human thing to do. Everyone gets to eat at the end of the day. There is no loss of income to some folks. If you guys really need this money, you should open your books and let everyone see what's going on with the money on a yearly basis. Don't just come here arbitrarily and say, "We can do this," because that's what it seems like. You guys are not gangsters, and neither are we.
Thank you.
All right.
Marian Babawala, followed by Lena Malendez. Yes, you are.
Hello, board.
Hello.
It's Marian Babawala, but thank you. Okay, so I'm 17 years old, and when I was 16, I met this boy named Amadou. He lived in one of the many shelters in the city, and after realizing how the struggle of housing insecurity affected my friend emotionally and mentally, I came to a really simple conclusion. If I believe that if you work in the city, you should be able to afford to live here, point-blank, period. It's nonsensical how the majority of homeless in New York City have a full-time job, yet they can't afford to make the rent. Like, too many people are on one paycheck away from not being able to make the rent. No pomentos, madermas aumentos. It means we cannot handle any more increases. I attended the meeting at Cooper Hall, and I would like to tell the members of the board, your decision on affordable housing, it has a real human impact. You cannot continue to prioritize money over the quality of life. My friend Amadou isn't here to speak, so I'm here for him, and I know his story resonates with all too many New Yorkers. You really owe it to us to make this right. Thank you.
Thank you. Lena Malendez, followed by Lydia Aponte.
Hi, my name is Lena Malendez, and I'm a native New Yorker. Landlords come here and cry. They cry broke despite rent loopholes skewed in their favor, despite thousands of illegally deregulated apartments, IAIs, MCIs, despite rezonings, despite selling to speculative investors, despite making huge amounts of money, many landlords have 100, sometimes 200 or more buildings. Regulated buildings are allowed to fall into disrepair, not because the landlords don't have it to fix their properties, but because they're hoping that low-income tenants get disgusted and move out so that they can deregulate those apartments. IAIs, the mechanism that allows rampant landlord fraud, because there are no requirements for receipts and nor are there any caps that say how much they spent on the upgrades. 62,000 homeless New Yorkers, 22,000 children sleeping in shelters. These are our communities. This is what we face, homelessness. The Rent Guidelines Board is supposed to play an unbiased role in approving rent guidelines. Yet all nine members are chosen by the mayor, who has proven himself a greater ally of developers and landlords than tenants. $70 million is the minimum that you need to run for president. Thanks to Revny, the mayor is able to run for his presidency, all right? The mayor should be working for us, not out at the border campaigning and grandstanding in Iowa and all these other places. He should be here, working for us, and you should be working for us, so do your job.
Thank you. Lydia Aponte, followed by Jorge Figueroa.
Can you confirm that the interpreter is actually interpreting to people who have equipment right now?
I believe I can.
I don't hear, I don't see her mouth. She's sitting in the crowd. Oh, in English. I could just ask. Martina. Martina. Estás oyendo interpretación? Yeah. Yeah. Hello? Hi.
Hi, thank you. Sorry for the delay.
That's all right. Mine's going to be short. Anyway, I worked as a secretary for many years. I maxed out my salary. I worked two jobs. I put my son through college. And if -- I've never been sick in my life. I got increased for the MTA. Now, if you increase the rent, I now found out I was sick, and my medical bill's astronomical. I've had people help me at the hospital pay some of them. I just got out of debt. I didn't want to retire on debt in a few years, and now my bills are mounting. They can only give me so much help. If you increase the rent, I got to give up something.
Thank you. I do not have anybody after this, so if we do not get another speaker, we may take a brief break. Yes, good evening.
Yeah, hi, good evening. My name is --
Do you want to maybe let people settle down? And I'm sorry, Mr. Figueroa. We'll let people settle down so we can all hear you?
Sorry, sorry. My name is Mr. Figueroa. Somebody asked me to take the time because nobody was able to talk right now, but if I'm not, I signed the list outside, and I asked if I asked to talk now. That's the reason that I'm here right now. So, but I'm on my way.
That's not him.
Yeah, I know. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Could you repeat your name?
Yes, Manuel D. Acevedo.
Para confirmar, usted firmó afuera?
Sí.
Y no tenemos su nombre aquí, por eso le están preguntando por su nombre. Y tenemos interpretación ahora mismo, so si usted quiere.
No, but I believe that I might explain in English or Spanish.
Okay.
I got a problem with that. Can I talk?
I'm sorry.
He said he signed up outside. I don't know what that means.
Okay.
Usted firmó la lista fuera del edificio aquí adentro?
Dentro.
Yeah.
El número 63, y también me dijeron que, como repitieron el mismo número, que lo borrara y que entrara y que podía hablar.
He said he was number 63.
But I'm on my way.
You know, I'm sorry, we're only on speaker nine, so is Jorge Figueroa here?
Jorge.
David.
Jorge.
He was the former staff. He's here. I saw him sitting over there.
Is he coming down?
I don't see him coming down.
He's not coming down.
He's not in the room right now.
Oh, okay. All right. So, we'll figure out if we can stand for people to get out with their names, people registered.
I saw him sitting over there.
Is he coming down?
I don't see him coming down.
He's not coming down?
He's not in the room right now.
Oh, okay. So I think people are registering now. We're gonna stick to the ordering that we have, so we're gonna take a brief break, and then we're gonna, hopefully, Mr. Figueroa will be back in the room, and then we'll continue past Mr. Figueroa after the break. Thank you.
I'm sorry, some of us have been told that if we registered at our own facility, we don't have to register here. So I registered at my CASA office, so I was told to bypass the desk and come down. So there may be confusion here about the process, so can that be cleared up?
Yeah, so that's a good point. To speak, for everyone in the room, to speak, you have to be registered at the desk.
Thank you.
I believe Representative CASA is bringing names to the desk, but you have to be registered at the desk to be called. And we're gonna go in the order that people are registered. Okay, so we're gonna come back when we have the correct ordering of speakers. Thank you. I apologize for the delay, but we're back in business. Is Jorge Figueroa back in the room? Please, thank you.
Good morning, I mean, good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
My name is Jorge Figueroa, and I'm a Bronx resident. Today, I'm here because I would like to thank everybody for coming here today, and, you know, I would like to say that a rent increase will only displays a lot of community member in our community. I feel like before you making the decision on increasing tenants' rent in New York City, you should probably want to go around this community and see the homeless population. There is a lot of people in our community that are still homeless. As a social worker, I have clients that come every day into my office and complaining about how they don't have a stable place to stay at. I feel like housing is not for people just to have housing because they want to have housing, but it's a human right that everybody in New York City deserves to have. I would also like to state that, for me, it's really annoying standing out here and giving my testimony as a Latino person when the majority of the people sitting on board are white. To me, that's not really fair. Why? Because I just feel like there is nothing for me to say about my housing situation, because you probably don't have to go through the same issue of most of the people that are here today have been going through in their apartments. Some of these people in this community are living with broken cabinets, no working stove, refrigerator, and some of them have leaks and moles in their apartment. And I'm pretty sure you probably live in one of the most expensive apartments in the city. So it's not fair just for you to come here and just hear me talking about how my rent is sold on high, when you don't understand the struggle that I had to go through, whether I had to pay med, I had to pay my utility, or I want to pay my rent and survive and not be homeless. Thank you.
So the next speakers that we have lined up are Yocelyn Gomez, Sicoferro Roman, Sylvia Estudelo, Ignacio Diaz. And I believe we need an interpreter to join at the mic.
Buenas tardes.
Buenas tardes.
Mi nombre es Yocelyn Gomez. Vivo en el 750 Gran Concourse. Milando, o el propietario de mi building se llama B. Parkas.
Good afternoon, my name is Yocelyn Gomez. I live in 750 Gran Concourse. The landlord of my building is named B. Parkas.
Ustedes lo conocen? Estoy segura que sí. Maybe los que están en la mesa no lo conocen, porque ellos no van a tener un lando como el que yo tengo.
I'm sure you know him, maybe you do know him, and maybe some of you don't know him, because I'm sure you don't have a landlord like the landlord that I have.
En esta tarde, yo he venido después de levantarme de las 3:47 de la mañana a estar aquí, a defender eso que yo hago todos los días.
And I'm here after waking up this morning at 3:47 a.m. to defend my right, which is something I do every day.
¿Para qué? Para pagar mi renta. Yo pago 1,616 pesos de renta, que al año son 19,452 dólares, que el lando de mi building los recibe free, sin hacer nada durante el año entero. Eso es año tras año, recibiendo 20,000 pesos al año y no hacen nada.
And why do I do this? Because I spend all these days, why I do this, to pay my rent. I pay $1,616 a month. That is $19,452 a year. That is $20,000 that my landlord gets without doing nothing, no repairs, nothing in my building. He gets these $20,000 for doing nothing.
Que ya le voy a decir a ustedes. En esta sala que está ahí, hay nueve representantes. Cinco que supuestamente manda el alcalde de Blasio. Yo quisiera decirle nada más a esos cinco, porque los otros no me interesan, porque Sheila está de nuestra parte. Pero a ustedes le quiero decir que Blasio se está candidateando para presidente, y que él tiene que contar con los tenis del bronca para poder coger la presidencia de este país.
And there's nine representatives here, and I don't really care much for all nine, because I know some of them are on our side, because Sheila's on our side, but to the five representatives that are supposedly supported by Blasio, I want to say this. I want to say that Blasio is running for president, right? And Blasio needs support from Bronx residents to get that presidency.
Por eso, por eso, en esta tarde le voy a decir a ustedes que le transmitan a su jefe, que es el señor Blasio, que si él quiere gobernar este país, que no nos suba un centavo de renta, que no nos la suba, porque el Bronx se va a tirar a la calle. Ya estamos cansados, señores. A ustedes no le importa, porque ustedes no saben lo que es ganar todo su dinero cada 15 días y dárselo a un lando, y quedarse sin ni siquiera dinero para comer usted o sus hijos. Ustedes no saben eso, ni nunca lo van a saber, que en verdad no sé para qué te junta nos representan a nosotros, que deberíamos de estar sentado ahí. Somos nosotros, no son ustedes.
And I want to tell this board that if Blasio wants to run for president, he need not raise the rent, not even one cent. We are tired, and I am tired of spending all my week, 15 days, getting a payment, so I could just give the payment, and then sometimes not even have enough money to eat or support my children. This board is supposed to represent the community. We should be the ones in the board. We should be the ones making these decisions, because we just don't like what's happening.
Thank you. Sicoferro Roman, followed by Sylvia Estudelo.
I have a short notice to tell you, a little, it's a short story. I am here to demand a rent freeze. Tenant like myself need it, why? Because MCI, Major Capital Increase, on my monthly rent of $1,440, got an NMCI of $13.40 per room, a total of $53.60. Rent increase of $1,493.60. That's why we'll be cut off $637.22 yearly on my grocery. I need my grocery, I need my food. I asked the members of the Rent Guidelines Board to look at our site and reconsider how it would affect our daily life. I am a senior retired, living in a fixed income. Every penny counts. When I see one in the floor, I bend down and I pick it up and I hold it tight. Thank you for listening. God bless you, give you all the strength.
Thank you. Sylvia Estudelo and Ignacio Diaz.
Buenas tardes a todos.
Buenas tardes.
Mi nombre es Sylvia Estudillo.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Sylvia Estudillo.
Mi dirección es 3425 Gates Place. Mi casero es Morgan Grove.
My address is 3425 Gates Place. My landlord is Morgan Grove.
Nosotros nos renovaron cocina y baño. Ahora nos pusieron el NCI, que nos están cobrando 81 por cuarto, y mi renta es 1,300.
We just got our kitchen and bathroom renovated. They implemented the MCI, and they're charging about 81 per room, and my rent right now is 1,300.
Quisiera pedirles de favor que no aumente la renta, porque es demasiado dinero más, aparte de que los otros estamos pagando.
And I would like to ask you not let the rents be increased, because it's way too much money on top of everything else that we have to pay.
Y las renovaciones que ellos hicieron no fueron, la material fue de lo más bajo, porque todo se está cayendo ahora.
And those renovations they made were awful, because they used the cheapest material, and everything that they did is just falling apart now.
Creo que no merecemos que nos aumente la renta, por favor, que no más, no queremos que nos aumente la renta.
I don't think we deserve a rent increase, no more rent increases, please.
Y gracias. Buenas tardes.
Thank you. I have Ignacio Diaz, and then Stephanie Martinez. It would be helpful, please.
Good evening. My name is...
Good evening.
Good evening. My name's Ignacio Diaz. Thank you all for coming. Thank you, representatives. First of all, who are we? What? 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 Who are we? Gentlemen and ladies, we are the Bronx. First and foremost, my name's Ignacio Diaz. I reside at 2295 Morris Avenue, Bronx, New York, 10468. Been living there for 40 years. In recent years, I've been in and out of housing court due to the fact of no heat, well, lack of heat and hot water during the month of January and February, during the month of January through May. It's been happening for years, and it's still gonna happen. I purchase electrical heaters, and every month, my electrical bill is high. I live on a fixed income. I'm a disabled American citizen, and I'm afraid of these hikes on rent increase. I have a two-year-old daughter, which she gets sick constantly during the wintertime, during the times of January to May. Now, in and out of housing court, I always lose a battle. I never get no answers, and I don't see why should we pay extra on rent control, on rent, if they don't abide by what they need to do again? I have to pay extra on electrical bill. Why do I have to pay extra on electrical bill when they provide heat during the wintertimes and it lacks? Again, last year, y'all raised the rent by 2%. So what does rent control or stabilization means to you guys? You understand? In conclusion, who are we again? I don't want to move out, but they pushing us out. I'm a Bronxite, and I'm being pushed out, and again, I'm afraid.
Thank you.
I'm afraid. Thank you.
Next, I have Stephanie Martinez, and then Roman Mendez.
Well, I'd like to start off saying a question to you all on the board. Have any of you experienced homelessness? With these rent increases, they come with income increases, because people get paid more money, but then it gets taken away. You see, the cost of everything goes up when you get more money, and that's true. Everything has its place. But some of you will never experience what it is having to decide for someone's children if they should sleep in a bed under a roof or have something to eat, because they can't afford both food and paying their rent. And throughout this meeting, I've seen a few of you go on your phones while people have been speaking, and I'm not sure about that, but it's really rude. Specifically, is it Patty at the end, and Andrew? Both of you were on your phones. I just felt like that needed to be spoken on, because everyone who speaks here matters. Everything they say matters, and what you're showing is that the people don't matter, but that's what this hearing is about: the people.
Thank you. Next, I have Roman Mendez, followed by Alison Manuel. Is Roman Mendez here in the room? No? Alison Manuel, followed by Emmanuel Parbilla.
Hi, I'm Ramon.
I'm sorry, just give me one second. No, it's not number 24. Yes, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Good evening to everyone here, especially those missing work and family time, because we still have to fight this yet another year. It's another year of the RGB hearing, and most likely, yet another rent increase. Year after year, we do this. Year after year, we talk to you, tell your stories, cry out to you even, on why you shouldn't increase the rent, and yet, every year, you increase it. What's the point? You already know what's going on. You already know how people live. You already know people are getting evicted, homeless, barely making ends meet. How can someone buy a car to go to work? How can someone put money away for their children to go to college if it's all going to rent? Oh, the poor landlords, will anyone think about the landlords? We only think about the landlords when we are sold this lie that they are barely making ends meet, when most landlords own several buildings. Guess what? If you can't buy a fourth building, a third building, and you need to increase the rent to make it so, then don't be a landlord! Get a job, just like we do! You already have MCI. You already have MCI's, you already have IAIs, you already have abatement, vacancy bonus, decontrol, et cetera, et cetera. And on top of that, you need to increase the rent? I'm sorry, but either you're greedy or you're really bad handling your business. And we refuse to keep subsidizing your greediness. We don't only deserve a rent freeze, we deserve a rent rollback.
Alison Manuel and then Emmanuel Parbilla. Alison Manuel? Emmanuel Parbilla?
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
My name is Emmanuel. I'm a volunteer organizer in the South Bronx Tenants Movement. But I also organized in the Northwest Bronx Committee and Clergym Coalition up in the Fordham Road area, Burnside area, places that probably you guys aren't too familiar with. So I'm gonna start by talking about what I saw in the Northwest Bronx. In the Northwest Bronx, we have actors like Finkelstein. We have actors like Bed Parkash. We have actors like David David, who are harassing, abusing, and taking advantage of their power, leaving tenants to fend for themselves, leaving tenants to accept abuse, whether it's sexual abuse, whether it's racial abuse, whether it's class abuse, just for the simple fact that they're a landlord and the tenants are tenant. That's what I saw. I saw tenants who died in Parkash buildings. I've seen tenants who were evicted a week before giving birth to their child. That's what I saw. In the South Bronx, where there's an opportunity zone, where developers are coming and going and taking advantage of the whole entire landscape, there isn't a single tenant organizing group that's supporting tenants. There's tenants who are telling me that they're paying rent and they're paying a water bill, something that the landlord should be paying. That ain't right. That ain't right. So I say that to say that we deserve a rent rollback. Nothing more, nothing less. A rent rollback. When did we ever get a rent rollback? Then, when did we ever get a rent rollback? We deserve a rent rollback.
Thank you.
When do we want that? Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I have Wanda Swinney and Blaze Davis. And I'm sorry, is Alison Manuel, is she back in the room? No? Okay. So, okay, thank you. Wanda Swinney. I have Blaze Davis, and then I have Corinne Amongo-Golden.
Good evening. I am Blaze Davis. I am a resident...
Good evening.
Good evening. I am a resident of Harlem, actually. I was born in the Bronx, so I feel the pain of all my brothers and sisters that's here this evening. I just wanna say that I... I just wanna say that I find it a little bit disrespectful that every year we have to keep having a meaning of rent increases. And what I find is, is that when you go to certain neighborhoods, especially the South Bronx, which they wanna rename Sobro, which is something we never agreed to. I found out Washington Heights, they wanna rename it Wahhi, and then in South Harlem, they wanna rename it Soha. All these different things that you guys are doing shows exactly where you stand with the native New Yorkers. And it is shameful, the fact of the matter, that each and every one of you that did the same thing last year would dare to do the same thing you would do this year. I don't understand it. I had conversations with people who are homeless on the two train, sitting there doing crack and doing cocaine. The guy just needed some money. You know what he told me? That he got kicked out of his apartment and he couldn't get a new one. So now he's trying to go from shelter to shelter to shelter. And how they treat these people in shelters are insane. They rather stay on the E train. They rather stay on the two train. They rather stay on trains. And we're also talking about a homeless crisis in this city. That correlates with what you guys are doing, putting up all these condominiums, having all these developers come to our neighborhoods and be very disrespectful to the tenants that live here. We are native New Yorkers. We love being native New Yorkers. We refuse for you to do this. It's not about asking and begging you. You should do it. That's without question. I don't understand how y'all can sit here and do the same thing every year and expect different results. We are telling you, you should. We're not asking you. We're telling you. Stop with the developments and take our lives into considerations. And we're gonna keep fighting till you guys do it.
Thank you. I have Corinne Amongo-Golden, and then I have Dave Suverin. Who's at the microphone now?
Swinney.
Wanda. Okay, thank you.
Hello, everyone.
Hello.
My name is Wanda Swinney, and first of all, I wanna say thank you for everybody because unity is everything, okay? Like I said, my name is Wanda Swinney, and I'm here to demand a rent freeze. I've lived in the Bronx for over forty years. I pay eighteen hundred and... Eleven hundred and eighteen dollars a month in rent. I'm a member of Banana Kelly and a member and shop steward of Local 420, DC 37. A resident council member, board member, a founder of a community garden, and I'm just looking for more stability in our lives, okay? I've been hurt twice by homelessness. One of my daughters had to go through the same thing that I went through after we were homeless together, after she became a mother, okay? Enough is enough. We have a right to have stability in our lives too, okay? We have, I have six children, sixteen grandchildren, and one great-grand. I still have two children at home. My children are from forty-five to twenty-nine years old. And no, they don't wanna stay home with their mothers for the rest of their lives because they can't afford to move out and get their own places. It's unfair. It's unfair. Okay? We're human beings too. Enough is enough. No more high rents that we can't afford. We have a right for stability too in our lives. Have you been homeless before? Do you know what it feels like? It hurts. You don't get up in the morning saying, "Oh, today I feel like being homeless." And it's not right how they try to take our homes, our roofs, and everything for my family that we done raised in these places. I done been in this apartment where I've been at for twenty-two years. Twenty-two years. To me, I bought the building and I don't own anything, and it's unfair. It's unfair. I could be one of your children. How would you feel? How would you feel? I just wanna say thank you to everybody for coming, okay? I'm tired. It hurts. It hurts like I don't wanna say the word, okay? I wanna be respectful, but please, no more.
Thank you.